Regular meeting of the City Council of Connersville is now in session. Please rise. We have Councilwoman Mike Bishop to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would please silence their phones. Reverend Ritchie Ware will give our invocation.
Thank you. Father, in your son's name, Father, we open up this meeting, God. We have a big slate ahead of us in 2018. And I, God, I ask you that you would bless every man and woman on this board. Father, bless their parent, bless their family, Father, and bless their children, and bless them, Father, for the decisions they'll have to make. Father, we're seeking a good year, prosperity for our community. And Father, we ask God for any unspoken prayer request, that those prayer requests would be honored also. In your sons' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Okay, we'll have a rule call, please.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips. Councilwoman Nettie.
Present.
Councilwoman Durham.
Present.
Councilwoman Frank.
Here.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Moby.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. So I got that right tonight. Okay. You have the minutes of the last meeting of January 2nd. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to pass it if presented. So move.
Second.
You have a motion to second to accept the minutes of January 2nd. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Going down to item A. Troy and Dale.
Hi, guys. What I've kind of ran into on this fire grant is we're having trouble getting our estimates on whether or not we're going to go for a truck or a short stick as far as a truck. They don't give very many vehicle loans out, our vehicle grants out right now. A lot of the money's split up into the safer and other things, so the odds of getting that is kind of slim. But we're going to try to go, we would like to go for an equipment grant. We're going to need air packs. Where we're basically at is we're 5% match and we're getting our numbers together and we don't have everything in of what we want to go for, but it'd be, you know, 5,000 or 100,000 is what we would have to have. That's where we're at. And if we went for a truck, the last engine we spec'd out of what we were looking around 500,000 for an engine and around 800,000 for a short stick. And the stick is what we have at Station 3, and that's what we're going to be needing, those two trucks in the near future, so.
Troy, do you have any idea how much the packs would cost? I know you said you had read the numbers on, do you have a ballpark on that?
Well, at five, like, me and Dee just looked, 5% of 500,000, 25.
But do you have any idea how much the air packs?
Oh, the air packs, we're looking at around 116,000.
Total?
Yeah. Yeah.
So all of them?
Yeah.
Are they all bad?
Well, what happens is they're bought on a cycle and you get a certain amount of time out of them and we're trying to get them before they run out.
Well, that's my question, would it be good to split them up so our cycle's not the same every time?
Well, we bought, we got the grant last time on them, is what happened.
They're part of the grant.
Yeah, so we're going to run out at the same time. They're not at the end of life, but they're close, so we're going to ask this year and maybe go next year if we don't get them this year.
What is the total monies you're going to be asking for in that grant?
I'm thinking we're going to go with the air pack and try to go with that, so we're probably going to be around 120,000, probably.
But that's our portion or that's the part of the grant you're requesting?
That's the total portion, total grant, and then we would be 5%, so.
Dale?
For us, we were looking at replacing an ambulance. If we do that again this year, we're looking at about 197,000 to replace the ambulance with. And then there's also another section of this grant we can apply for, and it's, like he said, an equipment grant. And there is a set of lifts that we can put in the trucks to help lift the cots, and those run about 25,000 apiece. So we're looking at total, ballpark of about 350,000 for the grant. It could be roughly 35,000 is what our match would be because we're a 10% match.
But we would have the money for that, so we wouldn't need appropriation for that.
Right, shouldn't.
How many sets of lifts?
Four.
Oh, four.
And that would replace, put them in, it wouldn't replace them, but it would put a lift in all of the main trucks, not the two back of trucks.
How many trucks do we have?
We have six.
How many is Lampard, so to speak?
Well, there's one that lives in the shop more than lives in our station, but we have basically two that are, have issues and they need to be replaced. We have two more that the rest is starting to take them over. And within probably another, I'm thinking, two years, the state probably won't approve them due to the rest, amount of rest that they're starting to pick up on.
And the other two are fairly new, right?
Yeah.
From the last couple of years.
Yeah, we have a 12 and a 14 that we don't have any issues with those.
The equipment you're looking for to help a patient in and out of the vehicle, it's 25,000 each?
Yeah.
And you're going to be looking at $250,000?
350,000.
350 from the grant or from?
From the grant. The grant total would be around 350. And these are estimates because we're just like Troy, we're having trouble getting some prices back from the vendors, but we're guesstimating that we're looking at about 350, and then we're a 10% match, so it's about 35,000 to match.
Okay, I appreciate you correcting me because I thought you said 250,000. I was trying to think, we're going to get an ambulance for 150.
How many are you attempting to replace, Dale? I mean, are you looking at replacing the whole unit or?
Yes, this will, if we get this grant, it will replace the complete, you know, with brand new. It won't be a remounted, it'll be a brand new.
One or two.
One. This is a replacement for one truck.
What kind of lifts are these?
Pardon me?
What kind of lifts are these? I'm just dumb to this area, I guess.
It's a lift that will slide out and the cot will hook into it. We have, they're called power pro cots, and when it brings the wheels up, the piece that comes out of the truck will hold it instead of the guy having to stand there and hold it while the wheels are coming up, and it saves a lot of back trouble.
Oh, I can see that. I was just wondering, thinking.
Yeah, that will.
Twenty, I'm just, I'm, guys, I'm done every day, how's that?
Yeah, it slides clear outside the truck and then picks it up and then slides all back in the truck.
I see.
It's all on the main deck of the truck.
Our numbers show, excuse me, our numbers show that we've got a pretty positive trend going in revenue. Is it staying pretty stable?
Yeah, we're, actually, we're getting ready to start February 1st. We'll start a complete new building computer system, which they're telling us will help. And for that, and a lot of it is the state's mandating, a lot of changes to it. And then our run volume is up, well, about 400 runs, I think it was, compared to last year. So we're up a little over 4,700 runs, so.
So the new truck will have a lift itself?
Yes, it's already spec'd with that lift in it.
Dale, I know we usually don't know how long these take to figure out when we get these grants or not. How long do you plan on waiting on this one? Because, I mean, Mike, we've probably got to finish there to buy a couple of those lifts now.
The grant, the paperwork that Diane had told me today that they're saying they will start releasing after April, but it's government, so we're looking at probably next April instead of this April.
Would you guys consider using some of the money that Charles squirreled back for the lifts?
Possibly, possibly.
And this is box and chassis both?
Yes, complete truck, yeah, complete, complete ambulance.
The big boxes or the?
F-450s.
What would be the big box or the shorter box?
Well, right now, this is spec'd as the big box, but until we get a place to put it inside.
We have to use a bit smaller box.
We got to go small.
And that usually costs us more, doesn't it?
But.
And we are working on trying to find a place to house all the ambulances in one location.
So if you want to donate a building, it's, that'll work too.
I knew that day was coming. I knew that day was coming. How much longer we got on where we're at in the building we're in?
Well, as far as equipment wise, we're ready to move out now, but as long as we can keep buying small ambulances, we're there where we're at. But the hospital, we still are under contract with them.
How long is that?
It's a year-to-year contract, so.
So how many places we got with storing ambulances now?
Two.
Two, okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more questions for Troy or Dale?
That's good, Dale. We've applied for these every year I've been on council, I think.
So we need your approval to go ahead and let them apply?
So move.
And this is for two separate grants or is this a grant?
Two separately.
Okay, is there any more? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Item B.
Everyone has a list of the outstanding checks over two years. Just need to have approval to write them off.
What? What we've discussed, would you still just write them off in the year?
Yes.
It wouldn't prevent being reissued?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion? We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Pending orders 3397, establishing funds for the vehicle and equipments for the police, landfill, park, and MBH. I think we talked about that at budget time, and we're trying to put away $50,000 for each department. Any questions for Rosemary or me on that?
And these funds come directly out of what's already being collected, correct?
That's correct.
This is not new monies?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it was actually, we talked about putting it in the budget originally, but some of the equipment's going to be a little larger, so it's going to take a little bit of time to come like that.
Is this based on how much the draw is, Rosemary?
No, these were numbers, I just, for, last year we did 52,000 for two police vehicles. That was the number that I loaded in before budget that, yeah, that was approved. I think Park chose to only do 20,000 for, they're looking at a mower. And so the numbers will change depending on if it's available year to year.
Thank you. This gives us an opportunity to save a little more money.
And?
Go ahead.
I apologize if I've asked this in a previous meeting, but the money setback for Park is designated for mower. Are you going to keep it as mower, not just equipment in general?
And you can see from the non-reverting funds, they are, there will be vehicle, equipment, non-reverting funds.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
I'm going to accept pending orders 64, 57.
Second.
Arm 3397.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rule and go to third and final reading?
移到
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to suspend the rules on pending orders 3397. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay, then we move to third and final reading.
移到
Okay, we moved, third and final reading on pending orders 3397. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay.
Items 3D through 3I are resolutions. Resolution 2018-2 is a reimbursement in the amount of $710 to be re-appropriated to the police telephone and $182.41 to be re-appropriated into the first aid uniforms. Resolution 2018-03 is a reimbursement of $2,250 going back into the riverboat. What caused that was when we bought the radios last year with that approval, it cost a little bit more, but they got the rebate to cover that, so that's why that money's going back into the riverboat. 2018-04 is the resolutions moving the money from the separate funds into the non-reverting funds. So 2018-04 is 52,000 going from general to the police non-reverting vehicle equipment fund. 2018-05 is where 52,000 is going from the general fund to the non-reverting landfill vehicle equipment fund. Resolution 2018-06 is where 20,000 is going from the park fund to the non-reverting park vehicle equipment fund. 2018-07 is where 52,000 will be going from the MBH fund to the non-reverting vehicle equipment fund.
Now, these are actually coming, going from the general fund, it says here from the general fund.
I know, but the last two was incorrect on the.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept resolution 2018-02 to resolution 2018-07.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Going down to item J. Brad, Jess, where the.
They're outside. There we are. Evening.
Howdy.
Well, most of you know about our idea. We've been rumbling around about this for about six months, and we were trying to come up with ideas of how to raise money for the new ballpark. And the idea that we came up with was to put on a major concert in the amphitheater. So Jesse and I have been working on all the due diligence. We've spoken to the legal people and the insurance people and to make sure that the city would be insured and not taking a chance with losing money on this thing or whatever. So we've got a committee that we've been working with for several months now. We'd like to, what, as we've progressed along, what we kept running into was we needed seed money. And that we needed money because when you book an act, a major act, you have to pay half upfront. And so we kept running into that. We're going to try to have sponsorship packages where we can get that, get the money back that we pay out for the act, but it's hard to sell an act that you don't know who it is. So working with Rosemary, we came up with some ideas and maybe she could explain what it is that.
We chose $50,000. That way we have the money available to go out and get a better act. But if we don't have the sponsorship money coming in quick enough behind it and we need the additional money for the stage and the lighting, I wanted to go ahead with the larger number than starting out with small than having to continue to ask. But the way it's set up is it'll be paid back in full by the end of the year, and if we choose to do this again next year, then we'll be able to estimate how much money we'll need to borrow next year.
You haven't talked to anybody yet, have you? I mean, I know you was kicking some names around, but you haven't settled on anybody?
No, the only thing I'll say is a major act, you know, not somebody that had one hit 40 years ago or something like that. We're looking at a name that people will recognize, because this thing won't make money unless we sell out the amphitheater, so we got to get it. We got to pick the right one, so.
And the amphitheater sits, what, 2,200?
About that, yeah.
I believe that Brad has talked with all or majority of the council and probably Board of Works also. And I've had the opportunity to talk with him in his office and ask a lot of questions and what ifs, and I think that he has, and Jessica and their committee has done what they could to make this a positive thing for Connersville. They've looked at, like he said, through legal, through insurance, through notable acts. I think that thinking outside the box at this time might be the right thing to do.
Absolutely. I agree.
I believe the toughest thing, and Brad and I had a conversation about this, that they're going to find is who do they choose to come to Connersville? Because you're going to have to find someone that pleases an array of young people, middle aged people, old people, and what have you. And that's going to be a tough decision to make.
And this won't be an act that Connersville Fayette County people is going to go to. We're talking about east central Indiana.
It's going to draw.
All of east central Indiana is going to want to come.
Well, you're going to have it outside east central Indiana all. I mean, from the three states around us, I'm hoping you can, we can gather in people for that.
And our, you know, our number one objective is to raise money for the ballpark, but it's also to bring people into town to watch a show and to prove that the amphitheater's a viable option to raise money, to make money.
Because, you know, people talk all the time about wanting more hotels and stuff. Well, unless you get people in here that's going to come and stay, to go to some stuff like this, you're not going to get a hotel till you start having things like this. So I think it's a great idea.
Well, and that asset's very underused.
Yeah.
Having done this in the park, being associated with it for several years, it's a tough task, what you're coming up against. But the biggest cost that we found so far is advertisement. It's very expensive, whether you go paper, whether you go radio, television, whatever you do. But in order to draw from other states, you've got to get information out to those other states and let them know exactly what you're bringing in, what the cost is going to be in the old nine yards.
Social media helps that too, a lot will aid that.
Yeah, we plan to.
Probably find more than some of them.
We're going to be creating a page once we get everything ironed out and who it's going to be, and we're a little working with Brian at the radio here, so advertising.
We've got a, our committee so far is made up. Brian Durham's back here. He works for the radio station. He's helping us with the promotion. And Mandy Falk, who's put on events. And Mike Selkey is going to help us so that we'll have an expert with lighting and sound and all that stuff. And we're forgetting. And then Jess and I, and then Chad has agreed that he'll serve on the committee with us, so we'll have somebody from the council. And any of the rest of you that's interested, you know, we're, we need all the help we can get.
Okay.
This is a, it's a good economic driver for Connersville, if you look at it. Look at the broad spectrum. You're going to bring in a lot of people from out of town. That's going to serve and heat our restaurants. That's going to stop our gas stations. That's going to stop our shops. So it's not just the concert that's going to benefit from it, but anyone surrounding Connersville with a business, if you, or if you want to strategize with them and be part of it, you have the opportunity.
Yeah.
And this could help your business, help your restaurant, help whatever grow. And I was talking with a major developer today, and I just kind of mentioned to him what we're looking to do, because I was trying to pick his brain, it's my disc, because I have a world he lives in. And his first convo was, man, that'd help put Connersville right back on the map.
In the right way.
And he thought it was a great idea.
Well, I mean, I know it's a risk, but, you know, you have to take a risk. We're all a little nervous, and I expect you all are too. This is something we haven't done before, so.
We got to do something.
We're perfectly happy to have plenty of input from all of you and.
It's a risk, but it's not a blind risk. That's right. And these guys are doing their homework, they're doing their numbers. And I've talked to Brad quite a bit about it, and it's not like we're stepping in just throwing money out being blind.
And if we don't make the right deal, if the numbers don't work, we won't do it.
That's right. One big selling point is, don't keep this in mind, if it's inside, the weather or not will be a problem. And that's, that's a big selling point. I mean, unless it gets like it is down naturally.
Right, yes.
You're going to, you don't have to worry about the rain or whatever. And I presume you're going to have it sometime midsummer, if you.
Fall.
I'm here, I'll do whatever I can do to help you.
Of course, the goal is to highlight the park also.
Okay, is there any more questions for them? If not, I entertain a motion. So move. We have a motion to second to pass pending orders 3398 on first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
移到
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to go to third and final reading?
移到 Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to go to third and final reading. Is there any more discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
I mean, go ahead.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
There, you got your job cut out, Brad. Thanks for your confidence. We'll try to, we will live up to it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, is, is there any old business?
Hey, Brad, I would like to say your report very well done. Reads very well. I really enjoyed it. It was more than just report. You gave future plans, you gave future layout. That helps us where we're trying to prepare everybody as well. Thank you for that. They always do.
Channel 3 also has a very good annual report in front of us. I appreciate them doing that.
Okay, going down to item 5. Last one thing I'd like to say is I'd like to say thanks to all the city workers. They have earned their pay and more this last few days. They've been out in the cold, and I appreciate what they do. I was out, saw a fireman, the fireman out on 24th Street the other day fighting a fire. They've, they've done their job, and we appreciate it. We've seen policemen out, and this is not, not the weather you want to be in, so appreciate everything you guys do and keep it up. And so, how you doing? Hold it on salt, Daryl.
I've got 200 ton orders. Right now, my barn is pretty dry.
We had access. We had access at one time.
Yeah, we did.
I didn't want to use it, did we, Daryl?
We're about to not have access anymore. We're about to go through that.
Okay, going down to public forum?
Mayor.
Yes.
My name? We have helped out the utilities, bless their heart. They've had five, six main breaks out there in all that water and code, and we've just been standing by the salt. But you talk about people who've earned their money.
Yeah.
They've earned their money. Okay?
Okay. Back to the salt, but how are we doing on, I know you pre-ordered some. How are we doing on money-wise with the pre-order and everything that we paid for on that? My question is, are we going to have enough or are we going to find more money?
A lot depends on what the weather does.
I get that, but that's my point.
One of the things, we may have to come up with some more money.
That's my point.
Yeah, we may have to. One of the things about most of the snows that we've gotten so far this year, been just about enough to aggravate you. Just enough to make us come out. Not enough to put on blades, but we got to do something. So therefore, we are going through some salt.
Well, that's my question. Do we need to start planning for that versus being caught up?
We may, we may. I can take a closer look at that and, you know, certainly let you guys know.
Does the cost of salt warm up this year, do you know?
Uh, no, we got the same price as we did last year. And actually, we got to carry that that we didn't use.
That's why I was going to ask you to carry it on down. For two years, we hardly used any, and now here it comes. But that's, that's the weather in Indiana, so.
It is Indiana weather.
But, I mean, we're, hopefully, we're going to be okay. I get a better feel for it after, now the next week, probably. If you want, I can give you some kind of report next meeting.
I'd rather just plan if we do need to order more, what's it take to fill the barn, what do we need to do, I mean?
Couple of hundred ton.
That doesn't sound like much, but that recoils to how much, how many dollars, I mean, that's the issue.
Do you know, Rosemary? Off the top of my head, I don't either.
Yeah, we haven't received any salt since I've been here.
No.
Oh, we have, yes.
But it was already paid for.
It was already paid for.
Yeah.
I have a clue.
It was sitting out on the Ohio.
Yeah. They probably got more sitting down there, but I'm not sure if I can get them, give them to us.
Yeah, but we just need a plan for it, I guess, is what I'm getting at. I'd rather be-
I'll go through my records and find out what it is a ton, okay?
That'd be good.
I'll get back with y'all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good job, by the way.
Hey, thanks.
I'll tell the guys.
I want to echo that.
And Dale.
Out on the streets, and I think they're, especially the main streets are in great shape for what we've had.
Okay, you got to open up to the public.
May I say one more thing? I recently, what they call graduated from the cardiac rehab area of Pitt Memorial Hospital, Pitt Regional Health System, where they helped me get back in a condition where I can go exercise elsewhere, which is now HealthWorks. But after 36 visits, getting my heart back going again, as any of you know, I had that surgery, I then found out just recently, and I took a picture of her certification, but Nancy Reddelman and her crew are now accredited as American Association of Cardiology, if I can say that word.
Heart.
Cardiovascular rehabilitation. They had to go through some stringent studies, reports, and accreditation for this, that's staff, that's program, that's equipment, that's everything, and I just think it's, it's a good thing that we have in Fayette County, that people don't have to travel a long distance to have this type of cardiac and pulmonary rehabilitation right here on Virginia Avenue. And I'd like for the community to recognize that and appreciate it.
Okay, is there anything else from the council? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second. We have a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.